Yeah.
Loose.
Is that you?
Yeah.
It's gonna be off.
Mine still does the same thing. It gets curly and my kids do like that. Do you need a hair?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
Trooper up and I'll go on to their.
Mine doesn't ever.
Milton and stuff.
But I mean. You gotta have a little.
All right, it's time.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order.
You're passing them away.
Um, no, it'd be next week.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good. We had a couple of dates floating around, so.
Okay.
Okay, so the only change on the agenda is the closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty um dot seventeen parentheses through collective bargaining strategy session that will be moved to next week.
Next week.
Yep, two six. Anything else? I don't know. Okay.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, unanimous that passes. Okay, minutes from January twenty third.
Um, I didn't see. What wasn't discussed or motion, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Unanimous that passes. All right, anybody here for public concerns? Won't see anybody on Zoom. Nope. Okay, Dean Kruger, your update.
Uh, Bruce called me last week and asked if I would give an update on this uh high five um project that was done around here. Um, but I understand it's gonna be from the first of the year till September of this year. Um, State Patrol, Sheriff's Office and the Police Department will do some uh sting operations where we uh check seat belts and and things like that. Apparently according to their records, we've had a uh quite a few fatality accidents in the area here and stuff and and uh uh fatality accidents involve people not wearing their seat belts and so they wanna educate everybody and kinda force a little bit so that we're people. You know, with WIs and seat belts and.
So.
How about cell phone?
Music.
Yeah, everything. It's. Yeah, it's pretty crazy. I mean, I didn't realize that we had so many fatalities in the county until I think they did like a five-year study and they had like fifteen over there in the county or so.
Five years?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't realize we had that many either.
But, you know, I should, I know I shouldn't even bring this up, but I know that one day they did a, they did a sting operation in Humboldt. And, you know, later on that night, we had two young people on Walbe and you know, they went off the curb and, you know, got killed and stuff, so.
Yeah.
But, that's it. I mean, we, we did as much as we could on Friday. They had a, an operation Friday and I think there's like four or five State Patrol up here. Um, seat belts and stuff like that. I think they brought one gallon for driving under suspension. Uh, we tried to participate as much as we could as well as the Police Department and stuff, but uh, you know, we had court that day and, you know, our normal day-to-day stuff, so. I mean, we did try to participate as much as we could, so.
What's it called, Dean?
Uh, it's called the High Five Project. Cause we're one of five counties that has a high uh fatality rate plus um they wanna increase our seatbelt usage for the county. Um, the average, I think, is like ninety-two percent. We're at eighty-eight percent, so. We're trying to improve this, so.
The interview with, um, was it?
Gardeners.
Yeah. He just made a comment that there will be, people will notice an extra presence of the troopers not only on the highways, but they will be running blacktops, so.
Yep.
I just thought that way we don't have to listen to the people. What, what's going on? Um, you heard it on KHPT. If you.
Yep.
Hear, hear it from you, then you have a pretty good chance that they're.
Yep. Through the, and they're gonna do it through the end of September this year, so. And they've been, they've been good. I mean, I, I do get hold of KHPT and they do announce that they're, you know, they're gonna be in the area, so, so.
All right.
Well, it's a good thing to make everybody aware of what's going on and.
Yeah.
Be cautious. I mean, it isn't anything trifle with simple.
Yep.
Things, especially the winter time.
Yeah. Yep.
All right, thanks guys. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, Mickey?
Got some bags for you guys again.
We give jackets, people.
There's certainly cookies in there, though.
No. I didn't have time to stop and get to you.
All time.
You.
It can be.
Yep.
All right, so I just wanted to come and let you guys know some of the things that have happened um like in the last year and what we're gonna try to do for this next year um like the county money that we get. Um, basically, for community and family resources, most of our stuff is for, it's grant funded through the Iowa Department of Public Health or Iowa Department of Health and Human Services now. Um, so some of the things that they have done recently is they've kind of constricted on what they're wanting us to do. They're trying to make it a little bit more uniform across the state. Um, trying to make it so that it's data-driven and evidence-based and, you know, all of those good things um through the strategic prevention framework. And um, so for Humboldt County, we are doing alcohol for adults. So that kind of goes along with what the sheriff is just saying. Um, and then we will also be doing an everyday life su- life support. Um, that's the IDPH media campaign um just to kind of bring awareness that there are resources out there that people can um call and get on the computer and look up. Uh, we will also be doing prescription medication for adults. Um, that's sixty-five and older, just kind of making sure that they're aware that um sometimes they may not remember taking their medication or, you know, some of the best practices in, in taking medication for some older adults. And then, of course, problem gambling. Um, so the presentations or the attendance or participation that we've had um is in the Humboldt, the Hamilton Humboldt and Bright Providers Meeting. Um, we've helped with the community needs assessment and we're building gambling awareness through our state opioid response grants. Um, we have several different trainings and that's in your packets. Um. Basically, we have, you know, everything from stigma to Narcan training. Um, we've actually had a lot of interest and had a lot of trainings for the Narcan training. So Narcan is the um overdose, opioid overdose um reversal drug. And we have done it tons around, everywhere around Humboldt. Um, we actually just got a new training coordinator on, so I'm not having to do all the trainings as well as try to supervise. So she has gotten a lot more done than what I was able to. So Humboldt is gonna be one of the next county she's gonna kind of focus on. Um, and all of those trainings are completely free. Um, we come to you wherever, you know, you're at time, all of that kind of stuff. It makes it so it's most convenient for you guys. Um, and then everybody would get a certificate or a free box of Narcan to have on their person or at our home. Um, whichever they decided to uh have it at. And then we also have the drug disposal bags. So those are the deactivation bags. Um, you rip the top off, you put your medication in there, fill it with hot water or warm water and let it sit for a little bit, seal it, shake it and throw it away. Um, it's a little bit easier than trying to make it to one of the drop-off places um or one of the drop-off events, cause they usually have April and October are the two um months that they do drop-off days. Um, so it's just something that you can have at home just in case like your doctor changes your medication or, you know, something like that. Um, our North Central Iowa Opioid Task Force meetings, we've been having those regularly. Um. And they've kind of identified some of the different areas that they would like to concentrate some of the trainings on. Um, so like I said, like the stigma training, um making sure that people understand that um opioids and psychostimulants should not go together, you know, that, that type of thing. Um. And then we also have our medication-assisted treatments at our Fort Dodge location, and then we have recovery support services. So we do have an outreach office here in Humboldt. Um, it's on Sixth Street. Um, and it's open on Wednesdays. We have our counselor come up here once a week. Uh, for FY twenty-two, we had a total of two thousand eight individuals served and three percent were from Humboldt.
That person that comes up to Humboldt rotates to different communities, correct?
Yes.
So, and they told us the other night at the meeting that, I think the Pocahontas uh location is closing, so those people will be coming towards Humboldt more.
For the immediate, yeah, for the immediate future. Um, and so we can find another location that have our counselor there. Yeah. Yeah. Um, so for mental health services for FY twenty-two, we had nine hundred and ninety-two individuals with one percent being from Humboldt County. So our residential treatment or withdrawal management remains open with precautions, of course. Um. We've had to go back to masking a few times because of the numbers within Fort Dodge, Webster County. Um, but we do have twenty-two beds that are available for men, twenty for women, thirteen for withdrawal management. And we have our onsite school that remains open and we have fifteen adolescents in there. Um, so basically, some of the things that we're doing in some of the other counties that I think would be really great to bring to Humboldt um is some of the classroom teaching. We've been in touch with the Humboldt schools over here and um the middle school and high school have done some presentations under um opioid uh use for teenagers, because sometimes if they're in sports, they may be prescribed an opioid um for a painkiller and then if they're using it correctly, they can still get addicted. Um, so we wanna make sure that we're educating them. We've also come up and done education surrounding smoking and vaping. Um, so we'd like to do some more of that. I would also like to get in to the schools. We're working with the middle school right now to try to figure out a curriculum that would be good for this location. Um, we always wanna try to tailor whichever project to the actual school and what their needs are. Um, so we're working with them to kind of get that done. And then actually tonight at the Fort Dodge High School, we're having a Slam the Stigma event that we would love to bring to Humboldt as well. Um, it's stigma for mental health awareness. Um, we all know that there's stigma surrounding substance use, mental health, all of those different things, and we would really like to get some more education out there and get people to understand that it's not something to be ashamed of. It's something that you need help with, so there's no, there should be no stigma surrounding getting that help that you need. Um, so that's at the Fort Dodge High School tonight from four thirty to eight thirty. Um, we're gonna have brochures. There's gonna be a bunch of different um resources there from Fort Dodge and Webster Counties. Um, we are just one of the resources. But when people go around to the different um resource tables, then they can take their brochure up to the concession stand and get free popcorn. And then we're also gonna do a couple giveaways. One for men, one for women, and then one for teenagers, because it's their basketball game that we're at, so. So that's something that we would love to bring to Humboldt County as well, because I do know that um in looking at the data, when we were writing our work plans, Humboldt County actually does have a pretty high um rate for suicidal ideation among youth. So um, that's just one of the things that we want to promote up here as well um to make sure that they understand that, that there is help out there. Um, you know, on the Your Life Iowa site, you can put in your location and it'll give you mental health services close by. Um, it's like a, a location place that you can put it in and it'll just pop up all the resources that are close by. Um, so just making sure that people know about those resources and um hopefully can drive some of those rates down. Um, that's one of my biggest things for, for youth especially, is making sure that they understand and know that that it's not usually as catastrophic as their mind is thinking it is. Um, and that there is help to work through that catastrophe that, that they're dealing with. Um, you know, maybe it might be something a little bit more serious, but that, that just means that they're gonna need a little bit more intensive help.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I have own, my own personal reasons for that. And um, so I'm really passionate about making sure people know about those things. And um, so that's what we would be, you know, requesting for services for money for services for Humboldt County. Um, you know, of course, anything we can do under the IPN grant would be paid for under that grant. But anything that falls outside of that, like the mental health awareness events and, and things like that, it would be funded through you guys.
Have you contacted Don Minster with um Boon Hill? She's our CEO for the Mental Health Region.
Oh.
And you know, there might be some coordination that, you know, instead of double, you know what I mean, just working with both groups to see how you can coordinate together.
Yeah.
That'd be Pocahontas, Humboldt. Um, I don't know if South Dakota, home is in with your group, but.
Yeah, I think they're, they came on. Um, but that name does sound very familiar.
Okay.
So maybe she's been on one of my meetings. They had, um, because they are having um a NAMI-type
Mm-hmm.
meeting.
Right.
That's on Zoom for Hamilton, Humboldt and Webster Counties. So I'm pretty sure that's where I.
Heard of the name.
Yeah. So do you guys have any questions for me? You got a lot of goodies, a lot of flyers in there, lots of great information.
I would tell, add to you uh your presentation that we had our meeting Thursday night. Michelle is always um gives us updates as to when people make a call, when people step forward and wanna, wanna help, it's important that they don't get told, well, we can see you next Thursday or we can see you a week from tomorrow. And it goes, you know, they work on trying to get the, the callback or the um interaction going ASAP and the, to make sure that the people are helped when they wanna.
Yes.
Because that, that time in their head is a crucial time for them to make the decision. I reached out. They didn't come back. I'll just continue doing what I'm doing.
Yep.
So, the, there are times and they've also, the merger is um pretty well taken care of with the Iowa City and the.
Yep.
Des Moines location, so they, they have increased their bed size, which has increased everybody's workload, but still, that's business they're in, so.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I, I think that the seventy-two hundred dollar request that we, you guys have asked for would be as well worth our money that we get every year, so.
Perfect. Alright. You guys don't have any other questions?
We have a date for the patents.
No problem, you're major. And if you do want any of the trainings or anything, you can contact myself or Lori McGinnis. Her name is on the top of the trainings. Um, it's the white sheet with the green border is the trainings, so um the contact info's on there and she is super energetic and fun and she has just done an amazing job in the short amount of time she's been with us. She's already done like ten trainings, I think, and she's only been with us since November. So of course there was a training period before, so, so yeah, she's done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ben?
Morning.
Morning, man.
Are you the one who scheduled these snows in the weekend?
Everybody gets worse. Right? Get all that extra.
Oh, yeah. Make them think they've lost their seat and they're dropped their, their motor control and.
They, um, yeah. The days definitely run together.
Yeah, they do.
That games all the time. Sunday morning when I was on the road, they were headed that way.
Yeah, I'd prefer it happen during the week or not at all, but lately it seems to be hitting on weekends. Um, what I've got today is to approve a quote for DEF Systems for the county sheds. Uh, currently, we get our DEF in fifty-five gallon drums with a plastic hand pump that we wheel around to the different machines and basically sit there and pump by hand to fill the vehicles. Um. Everything is switching over to tier four emissions. Everything that we purchase new requires DEF. I don't see that going away unless it goes to something else in a tier five situation. What we're looking at is purchasing a three hundred and thirty gallon tote uh with an actual
electric pump.
Electric pump. Uh, the quotes that we got were for stainless steel pumps as well as stainless steel nozzles. Um. Tom got quotes for us from both W H and Odison Co-op. Uh, currently, we've been getting all of our DEF from Odison. They have a trailer that they bring around to our different shops and fill our, fill our units. Uh, I guess what I'm asking is to approve the bottom quote for two thousand ninety dollars. Uh, includes a three hundred and thirty gallon tank, a hundred and ten volt pump, a meter, so the guys can log how many gallons of DEF they're putting into their machines, so we can keep back your track of what it costs for our machines to run down the road uh as well as filling the three hundred and thirty gallon DEF tank.
So this tote, you're rotated between shops?
We're gonna buy three of them.
Buy three of them.
This is one for every shop. This is for per shop.
Oh, this is for shop.
This is per shop. So the reason, the reason I'm bringing it to you is cause it's a six thousand dollar purchase.
Right.
Granted, three thousand of it is actually DEF.
Uh-huh.
Um, how long do you, uh, three hundred and thirty gallon tank, how long does that last? Well, each uh, each machine, depending on which machine it is, but each truck has, I think it's roughly twelve or fifteen gallon DEF tank in it. Uh, the motorators that we're purchasing have similar sized tanks. The excavators that we're buying have a little bit smaller DEF tank. Um. It just depends.
Twenty runs about eight gallons a week.
Okay.
Or, I mean, depending on how many miles you go, you go twelve hundred mile. Anywhere from six to eight gallons.
I think they typically, typically come by
Yeah.
once a month. So.
So, and they do, is there any charge for them? They just come and put the DEF that's needed and charge it. It looks like.
They just, they, they just top them. They top off the tanks and they.
You mentioned something in your DEF discussion here recently that Odison services pretty well. They actually go, right, just like bringing fuel, they bring the DEF each shop.
Yep.
Bags all.
So the way W H is set up right now is you've gotta load the tote in the back of your truck, drive it over to W H, get it filled, bring it back, unload it. Where Odison brings it directly to you and they're at a cheaper price.
These tanks are coming through where.
Uh, the tanks will be purchased directly from the elevator.
Okay, so there's no like a contract with them for so long? Just buy the tank and they.
You buy the tank and.
Okay.
So it'll be stationary then at each location or they put a, by the door?
We'll have it, uh, we'll have it between overhead doors at the shops where they can pull up alongside it outside or pull into the shed and fill, and fill. There's twenty-foot hoses with it, so it's got plenty of reach.
It'd work out pretty good, pretty convenient.
Um, I love to get rid of DEF, but I don't, I don't.
You and everybody else that's using it, any, anybody.
Death is.
Death is oh, diesel exhaust fluid.
Yeah.
I believe.
Yeah.
Uh, basically, it's, it's an additive that most of these machines have to run to clean up the emissions. Takes the sulfur out of the, out of the fuel.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and.
And it causes problems with the machine, so yeah.
It ruins the life of the machine.
Yeah.
See it.
Better without.
Yeah.
Semi or trucks are running and the black smoke pouring out.
You don't see.
You don't see that. Well, you still do once in a while. Somebody will have pulled all the DEFs out of it, but if you stop doing that, it's a fairly hefty fine.
Yes.
Well, it looks like this was well researched, makes sense, cost-effective. I can make a motion and we approve the two thousand ninety dollars per shop for the DEF systems as quoted. Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
So unanimous, so it carries.
Um. Beyond that, I wanted to bring to you guys uh know we've talked about uh approving all systems routes with the DOT. Um, I sat through sat through a meeting on Friday uh with the county exec board where the DOT talked about this all systems permit. Uh, in the month of January, they had roughly five hundred permits submitted through the DOT. At five hundred dollars a pop, it's roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Any county that opted in before January first gives that portion of the pie, which at that time was roughly twenty-five counties, so each county made about ten thousand dollars moving permits that month. Uh. Moving forward is a similar thing. Basically, if you opt in before Jan- or February first and the additional permits uh permitted throughout the month of February, we'll end up being divvied out. Had a later date. I've got a meeting on Wednesday with Chuck Britson, our bridge inspector. They are in the process of evaluating three bridges for us. Uh, west of Laverne, Gosh Park Bridge and the small bridge over by the, what I'd call the, the Claire Quarry or Stratford Gravel over there. Um, if those three bridges come back in good shape, I would add those additional roads uh to this map. This map right now that you're looking at, the blue lines are state roads that are already permitted through the all systems permit, and the purple would be roads in the county that do not have bridges that need to be evaluated. Um. So that barring any complications from the, the, the bridge load rating that I'll find out on, on Wednesday, I would approve this map plus those three additional routes.
That bridge down by the quarry that you're talking about, you know, would put their access for corn trucks going to Valero or Cargill um jumping off Highway three and crossing across P twenty-nine.
Which they're already doing.
Which they're already doing.
Right.
So I guess, to me, it makes perfect sense if it, the bridge will stand up good.
I believe it will.
If it wouldn't, I mean, my question would be, would we be better to put a um big box in there someday rather than that? Big box in there someday rather than that?
Yes.
That little bridge?
Yep, if, if it doesn't fly at the additional twelve percent, I mean, it's, it's kind of been hovering right out there. Just beyond the five year plan, it would be something that we would elevate to the five year plan to replace it with a box culvert. Yep. Just upstream from it is a. Ten foot diameter round culvert. Uh, so my guess is it'd probably be like a ten by ten box. I mean, without looking at the, the drainage, that's my assumption, so about two hundred thousand would replace it.
Would we be able to do that with our own?
No, we wouldn't be able to pick it up with any of our equipment.
So it sounds like you learned that this way the carrot dangling from the D O T for the.
It was a large carrot, which the first one, you had a rush that everybody trying to get permits. Yeah, like we've talked to people that bought the permit and didn't read the fine print, thought they'd be able to run everywhere with it. They're finding out that they can't. But talking to the D O T, I mean. They see this as a residual success rate that people, more and more people are gonna opt in as more counties are.
And did they, are they gonna keep it at a monthly allotment?
Basically, they'll, they'll go month by month is how they're figuring it, so as long as you're opted in by February first. Anybody that buys permits in February gets divvied out by the number of counties.
Yep, so that's.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Question wasn't, but it'll change a month because more people opt in and.
Right, they.
Is there gonna be an annual fee then?
There's an, well, there's an annual fee to the people buying the permits.
Yeah, okay.
So for, for counties, there's not an annual fee and obviously. Maps and routes will continue to change throughout the counties, I mean, Webster County is technically opted in. But they've only approved like a three or four mile stretch in the southwest part of the county. Cassuth County is all green. Basically, they've, I think they've evaluated all of their bridges and said, yes, we can handle the additional twelve percent load. They're cleared for everything, so. The quote that I got from Chuck Britson for, for us to have the bridges evaluated for the additional loads is roughly fourteen hundred dollars a bridge. Times seventy-two is a large sum of money, so can't bite that all at once.
No, but there, there's just certain bridges that. That's related all of them.
No.
You already got some narrowed down.
Right, I mean, we, we looked at what we had for bridges on paved routes and I think we're roughly thirty, thirty-two. So you're, you're still looking at.
Forty thousand.
Yeah, thirty-five thousand, he's more in there.
Then you're pretty cashed, or there's somewhat full. Nowhere near full.
We've got some money in reserve that we can pull forward, but.
But the other thing we have to remember is. These are only trucks that are running down the highway, there was the double Parker wagons or big Brent wagons that. Down every gravel road and. They pull onto a scale and they're over a hundred and fifteen thousand, they don't even. The D O T has no regulation of them and they don't pay any license fee.
Right.
Well, we have to pay the heavy highway tax, the, all the state stuff. And I'm not, I don't wanna fourteen thousand phone calls from people.
Good job advocating for the truck.
But it, it's frustrating and you know when you go down the road and that. Those holes and they say, oh, it's come out of trucks, yeah, but when the rails aren't moving the product, we gotta move. As much as we can, so.
Grains move by rails around here anymore.
Yeah, so.
Majority of the, the overweight permits are all gonna be all in grain, like you said. You know, moving from the elevators to.
The female or.
To rail or ethanol or.
So the majority of the elevators aren't selling fifty thousand bushels anymore, they're selling a million. And you divide that by a thousand bushels, that's a lot of trucks running down the road, back and forth through Claire, through. Our block tops and they're gonna be there. You know what, or high water, so as long as those two ethanol plants are down there, they're gonna continue to sink through the county.
I got a logistical question for you, for your map. Didn't mention anything from Iowa one sixty-nine on C twenty to Bode.
Right.
It's not marked.
Because there's a bridge.
I know there's a bridge.
It's not on the, well, I mean, the first three that we looked at were the, the heavy traffic.
Yeah, that one, that'd be maybe I'm not.
Yeah.
That would have to be the same program of inspection to see what the rating and all that fun stuff.
Right. Yeah, so fifteen hundred. To have them evaluate the bridge, basically.
So you're gonna have that evaluation done in a week or two?
Which one?
For the three that you mentioned?
Yeah, uh, my meeting is scheduled for Wednesday with them where we go over the bridge inspections that they did in November. Evaluate if any additional bridges need to be posted or the posting changed. At the same time, we'll look at those three bridges. And their evaluation is supposed to be done on those three by Wednesday, so.
So then in the next week or two, we'll know by the way you put it on the agenda approval or. Discussion.
Yep.
Sounds like you. For these routes and then the bridges in question, the first go around. Baby boat to move forward with this, I would like the, I don't like the money they're dangling out there.
I mean, we don't do, we don't do ten thousand dollars worth of moving permits in a year.
Right. It's a little benefit to us, sir.
Not to say that moving forward, you're gonna see the same.
No.
Dollar figures, but.
If you had all of a sudden a wind farm project moving in, you'd be buried in performance.
Right.
There you go, throw that out there.
This FYI, they're still knocking on doors.
I'm sure.
I heard somebody that they're still knocking on doors, trying to get people to sign out.
I figure it's, it's coming eventually.
Yeah.
Keep knocking on the doors and writing a bigger check, see this is what we'll give you, pretty soon the people say yes.
Matter of wearing it down.
So how did we do over the weekend for years now? Did they work all day Saturday and Sunday or?
Blacktop for the most part on, on Saturday, Sunday, we came in and we ran gravels as well. Most, I think the latest anybody had to work yesterday was right around two o'clock. We were. A couple guys short over the weekend, either illness or they were gone for funerals. Knock on wood, our equipment is still running. We've been kind of limping through the winter and we're down one machine, but. The new maintainer is supposed to be here two weeks. So, I think it's supposed to be here the week of the thirteenth, so.
And we always have a backup one though, right?
Our backups running right now, yeah. We're, we're not short one, we're, we're, we're down our extra one right now.
We don't have our backup sitting in the shed waiting.
Right, yeah.
So basically we're even.
Yeah. But we're still down one truck, so.
Is there any news on that or they?
Uh, the truck's sitting at the frame straightening shop in Marion right now. Uh, there was about a one to two week backlog at that shop, so they should be getting to it this week. And then I'll go back to Don's. Get the box book back on, the new lift cylinder. Uh, hydraulic hoses and the cab airbag replaced. And we'll go pick it up, bring it back here, my guess is it'll go right to Foster's. To make sure that the alignment and everything's good on it.
All right. So, thanks for working all weekend.
What, what I think if that's okay with you Ben, walk, hop down to drainage real quick, do that, that probably won't take that long. And I need to leave at nine twenty for about thirty minutes, we're gonna go into recess and do budgets and then I'll come back.
Okay.
Okay, is that, is that?
Yeah, that's fine, so just come back around nine thirty or.
Well, I get.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay.
Budget during recess.
That's what I mean, Bed's budget. I'm sorry, I missed it, okay, do we have a motion to go into drainage?
Motion to go into drainage.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries and then this. Yeah, the map looks really nice. Well, isn't blue supposed to be cool? Calming.
Yeah. Okay, so, um. I got a message from Crystal in Webster County and they have a landowner, I gave you the drainage petition that they sent through. They are requesting to be annexed into the joint DD seven Humboldt twenty-four or two forty-seven Webster. They're currently in DD sixty-eight in Webster, they don't, they know that they cannot get out of their district. That unless they do a reclassification, which, um, she is going to her board tomorrow. And it's a voluntary annexation, they're gonna have McClure Engineering review it. They know that they are not going to be out of their district, they're just gonna be annexed into this other one, which. What they said is the, the claim, they claim the flow of the land doesn't make sense for them to continue tiling an already overworked tile line. Which she agreed with and the ditch that they're going to is maybe a quarter of a mile away from the property that he has. Which is just kind of by, um. And by Jensen, it's like a couple of sections west of Benson. And, um, also he has a county line that hits in a parcel that he still has. Um, it's gonna be in DD sixty-eight, so he doesn't want to get out at this point, he just wants to be annexed into our joint district.
So it's good.
Yeah.
On both districts?
Yes, yes, the voluntary annexation, like Kerry said, he's not, can't get out of sixty-eight because.
Both.
Yeah.
Both.
Both.
And if they do have a reclassification, he could lessen his percentage benefit in. The current one, sixty-eight, but he just said it makes more sense for him. And they are at, I think they're eighty-five percent Webster and we're at fifteen percent, so it's. A relatively small percentage, but, um, so he just wants the okay for the petition that he gets annexed into our district also.
As humble colleagues concerned, this would be very little if any difference. It's this much. There's the, there's. Then it runs in west of town and he's talking down here somewhere along the distance.
Yeah, and I guess there's a private tile somewhere in there, but yeah, he, he said that he's only a quarter of a mile. From the ditch that he wants to go to.
I think he's. It isn't so much the ditch, he's a quarter mile from that existing private main.
Private, yeah, because they did say that there was.
Years ago, he's large enough to handle this land, I think. Now that he wants to tile that land into this main that he has.
So that's his main already.
It's already in the ground.
Right, and it's.
And it was in. Two forty-seven. Right, and that was not a problem because it was in that district, he wants to add into the tile, goes into the district. I'm sure it's on his other property. The only question I have is, does this have to be done as a joint meeting or can we get their approval when they. Being they have eighty-five percent, I don't think it could be an issue.
Yeah, and it sounded like that was also her consensus on it because, and I think their board. Because she was just gonna do a quick meeting before the board meetings to explain it since it was a voluntary annexation and it wasn't really going to. Have a huge effect on any of the districts because he's not getting out his.
No.
He's, you know, going into ours, but he's still keeping what he has, so.
Still on the other side also.
Little business in Humble County, it's a benefit because there's another person paying into it. I have no issues with Humble County. I'm understanding that we can probably give our blessing. We can give our blessing unless they, because it is a joint district, if they need any more regular roll. Yeah, well, I'll do, I'll make a motion for Homo County, give our approval for the annexation. I'll second that.
Here we have a motion in the second for the approval of petition DD seven dash two forty-seven.
So are you gonna leave it? Are you gonna leave it with Webster County then if they need to come back to us to have a joint meeting? We would be willing to, to do that.
Yeah, okay.
If they need that blessing.
Yeah, that's basically my, everyone here is okay with it, they need to have further action, do a joint meeting, okay.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, you name the list, Kerry's. All right. Go ahead, so you have.
Thank you, it was a very large group effort.
Did you get somebody to do it?
I'll go in a glass.
They said that they are old glass, it wasn't like cut, it was like nipped off.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and it's really thick, so it was very heavy, but yeah, it was, uh.
How many took, take to get it off the wall, did you lay it on like here?
They stood it up.
So there was two of them and then, well, the three or four of us in here were helping try to get the. Map up while they were holding it and yeah, get it centered and that was interesting. Bottom, it was, it was interesting.
Terry, can't start in something behind me.
It was the asthmus of the earth is why it's.
For those that think it's crooked, it tilts your head the other way.
Not in our lifetime here, right? A lot of tape. For your friends.
Oh yeah, they're so good, so, yeah. It was, it was an experience.
Do I have a motion to go out of drainage?
Motion to go out there.
The motion then to go to recess, so you can go or what?
Yeah, yeah, okay, all those are there for.
A recess?
I'll make a motion to go in the recess.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you guys very much for. Okay.
So we're gonna carry on with our work session.
And by then I should be. Well, hope, I don't think he'll do it again, I think they just, I don't, I don't. But anyway, Crown last week, I broke one, or the week before, and then I broke one. Turn on a tootsie roll.
I was gonna say, what's it say for your cooking?
Eating a muffin?
Yeah, he's eating a muffin, there was nothing, it was in the muffin, I was thinking this fell apart.
I chewed it and it came up and I felt, I don't know, you know how you kind of feel it?
Yeah.
And then I went back down and it, and I must have bit it and that, if I hadn't bitten down. It probably wouldn't have broken, then he could have just glued it back on, but it snapped it right. Yeah. Is that what we're doing now?
Yeah, we're doing budgets.
It gives a new perspective.
There's all your budgets. I put them all in here.
Oh.
So.
Oh, nice folder.
That's better than me with my paperclip in my drawer and then trying to dig back through to find them all.
I concur.
Awesome.
So we can just add as we go, next year I'll have a binder for you and we'll just reuse it each year. But I didn't think about this until yesterday afternoon.
Well.
And then it's a divvy down by a number. And then I'm counting. Well, you can go on the DOT's webpage and. Look at the map, we'll see who all has, who all hasn't.
Yeah, like we have two years until do you have to have. But it's unclear as far as you have to opt in all of your routes, you have to opt in with. Just a couple miles.
Apparently for your descriptions. There's counties that opted in and got money.
Right.
You can't tell when they opted in with every last mile in the county.
Sooth County, yeah, there's, there's one, two counties in in the state that have opted in and said all of our roads are fine, so that.
But the other counties that opted in with the percentage, still got.
Like is it Webster County, they opted in with three miles.
And they still got part of the. Well, not to berate the subject, but did they get, did they do it by a percentage of how much?
I don't have his numbers, didn't have his numbers, so I didn't.
Three miles, you could have pulled the white for county, that Pioneer Loop.
Yeah.
I'd opted that in. Yeah, no bridges.
Could have done the Webster County thing.
Yeah.
Just a little bit.
Yep, so.
But who knows how it's gonna pay out moving forward once anybody does opt in.
I mean, e- eventually every county will be opted in and everybody that's hauling grain. Other than farmers, which is completely separate topic, but anybody hauling, hauling grain from.
Here's there.
They're gonna be buying this permit, uh, contractors hauling construction equipment, they're gonna be buying this permit. I mean, this is the way that.
Over the ninety thousand.
Yep, then they're gonna, they're still gonna have to look at an individual overweight load. So, I mean, this only approves them for the additional twelve percent. If they're hauling something over that additional twelve percent, they still have to get it.
They're like the big Kevin stuff, it's still gonna be additional permitted.
Like maybe Marcel and them with their tiling contractors, you know, that type of stuff. Uh, they would fall under the additional twelve percent. I did get an email from Jensen Builders uh and Taylor. As far as for a uh steel building. He sent some uh site plans as well as some descriptions of what he was looking at. And an estimated cost. The estimated cost for a twelve thousand square foot building. With concrete was.
With a forty by two hundred pad.
Forty by, yeah, forty by two hundred pad on the outside. Uh, one million seventy-seven thousand dollars, rough estimate, that's no electricity, that's no heat. That's no bathrooms, no plumbing, that's.
The shell with.
Divide walls, yeah.
Don't put that number in a paper.
Yeah. We wanna go with wood or steel.
Right, yeah, uh, I did talk to Rainy the Grownback at Subway. Uh, Tuesday or Wednesday and I told him, I said. Board needs updated numbers, I said, we need something that we can send out for bids.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he stopped by on Friday and said, building materials are down. He thought fifteen, twenty percent from what they were a year ago. Uh, he said.
Concrete's up ten to fifteen percent of the year.
Yes. He was waiting for, he was waiting for a call back from uh Semstone for what his cost per yard was. Cause like you said, like you said, it was a hundred and thirty-five at the start of the year and it was a hundred and forty-eight or something like that at the end of the year. So he doesn't know what it is now. But that's where the building is at. Just wanted to update you guys on that. So I guess. Questions that I have, um, if we're moving forward with the building, I don't have any additional money set aside. I can always amend uh to pull money forward after the fiscal year. But as of right now, I don't have any money set aside for. Any additional costs beyond the uh ARPA funding that Tricia set aside, the seven twenty, I think. Seven hundred and twenty thousand.
But technically, you're not the one that we can't expect you to rob Peter to pay Paul. Take it out of your fund to help support whoever else is gonna be using that facility, right?
Right.
Right, we're all, if we're gonna have five different people or groups in there. They're all gonna have to tell them apart with some cash too, it's not like you're the only person playing poker and you got money and well.
I was gonna use.
Kind of the way I feel.
Yeah, so.
And basically, we get the building up and the doors and each department should, if they want extra stuff in there, that should be their responsibility.
Right, the main thing is if you know you're gonna want extra, you pull plumbing, you you.
Yeah.
You bring water to the building, you know, so I mean, you bring that much to the building and then if. If you wanna put in two single stalls.
Right.
You you can add it on later, yeah, yeah. There's a slim possibility that I will be able to get trucks. Uh, in the next fiscal year, I talked to Lenny with Reese and uh he thought he'd. Be able to allocate them the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, so basically a year from now. Um, he said, he asked if I was interested, said I was, he sent over uh some rough specs. I've looked through them right now, the foremen are looking through them to see if there's anything additional that we'd like to add to the trucks. Um, but otherwise, I've told both him and Freightliner, it's a first come, first served deal. Whoever shows up and says they can give me trucks is who we're going with. So. Um, but I've got money set aside for trucks in in our budget, um. You guys have. The budget numbers that I gave you the other day.
What are the trucks, or what are we talking about?
Uh, yeah. So I figured, I figured our budget at a four, five, six and seven percent increases for the guys. Because I didn't know where Conbord was gonna sit. Uh, I started out at a four percent.
Is it fair to mention something about this Conbord business?
Sure.
It's, and I don't, I'm not.
Are we off?
I'm not getting at.
Point of reference, probably should, you got.